Order, would you join me in pledge of allegiance to the Constitution?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the very body for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mandy, would you call the roll, please?
DeYoung.
Here.
Butler.
Here.
Carlson.
Here.
Hopkins.
Here.
Dan Strickland.
Here.
And may the word Emory be whispered out loud.
We would honor a motion for approval of the consent agenda for the county attorney. Court. Hopkins. Ready? Any discussion on what you see there? If you do none, alter our vote. All in favor, please say yes. Close no, per call of the roll.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Dan Strickland.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Motion carried. Plan for the public forum, is there anyone that wishes to speak on a agenda item? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. And we have a motion to address the consent agenda of the general. Hopkins, report. Butler, any discussion? If you do none, all in favor, roll yes. Close no, per call of the roll.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Dan Strickland.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes. Motion carried. Next, we have a public hearing on sanitary sewer CIPP lining project bids. Mike, you can set up, please.
Yes, council member, and for those in attendance and those watching at home, I'd like to direct everyone's attention to the big board for a brief presentation on this item. As council member DeYoung stated, the purpose of tonight's public hearing is to discuss the proposed sanitary sewer lining project that we have proposed, and we do have a description of the project as well, along with the street segments that are proposed for the lining project. Specifically, when we entertain the motion this evening, what the motion would do is approve the plans, specifications, contract, sets, engineers, estimate the cost, as well as the bids received for the projects, and ultimately awards the college in sanitary sewer lining contract as well. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, on April twenty-fifth of this year, we did conduct a bid lighting for the project, and we did receive three bids on the matter. As you can see, we had a fairly tight spread on the bids. The engineer's estimate of cost was just over two-hundred and one thousand dollars. The lowest responsible bidder was municipal pipe tool in the amount of two-hundred and six thousand, seven-hundred and seventy-nine thousand and ninety-eight cents. The engineer for the project was Garden and Associates, and they are recommending awarding the project the lowest responsible bidder, which once again is municipal pipe tool. Now, it's approved by council, the final completion for the project will occur on by August thirtieth in July. It is important to note that staff is in agreement with engineer's recommendation, and our recommendation is to actually award the contract to municipal pipe tools, while that includes the staff's presentation. We'd more than happy to answer any questions the council may have on this item.
Okay, give me a second, Mike. Contract means you're quicker than others. They gotta be here this soon.
Just prior to your arrival, I was blunt in ask, then invited our public board director to tell us all about pipeline.
Yep, I know that was gonna happen again. I brought some of my show and tell stuff that some of you have seen. And you know, it goes in as a sock, saw sock comes off the roll, it's rolled up. Push it from one end to another, then they blow hot steam in there to, so it takes the shape of the pipe that's there. So even if it's oval or cracked or broken a little bit, and they steam cure it for two to three hours, and it sets up as hard as plastic gets. It gives us another quarter inch plus of thickness on the pipe, so hopefully get another fifteen hundred years out of this pipe. The map's a little deceiving, and so is the cost. This is a relatively cheap method versus tearing everything out, replacing streets in the water. That stretch, that diamond Jefferson is a fifteen inch, that's not as large as we line, and that's actually a double barrel. Good share of that, the map kind of merges, so. We've had real good luck in the past, and unfortunately, we've got about two pages more. These are the worst of the worst, then determined by staff and garden help, this is that termination. So are we in the public hearing, or are we in the...
Exactly, we're in the public hearing.
Okay, so we're... Any written comments, Mandy?
No written comments.
Council, any comments? Is Spencer on the line?
Yeah.
You're a little, you'll wag a little, so if I get a head, you just yell at me. All right, any comments from the audience on this subject? All right, then I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Hopkins, DeYoung, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes. Close no, Mandy, please call the roll.
Hopkins.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Dan Strickland.
Motion passed. So now moving to the resolution number six-six-eight-nine, entitled Resolution Approving Plans, Specifications, Form of Contract, Estimate of Cost, Receiving of Bids and Making Award Contract for the Sanitary Sewer CIPP Lining Project. I doubt there's any that.
Give your friend, Mayor.
Okay, can I have any motion for approval?
Over.
Dan Strickland, Hopkins, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes. Close no, Mandy, please call the roll.
Dan Strickland.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, moving on, resolution number six-six-nine-zero, entitled Resolution Ratifying, Confirming and Improving Publication of Notice of Public Hearing for the Authorization of Not to Exceed Four Hundred Thousand Dollar Lease or Lease Purchase Agreement. This is from the general fund, Mike.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. Actually, we have three resolutions of tonight's agenda, and all relate to a proposed golf cart lease for the Boslonan Golf Course. Now, it is important to note that we did discuss this issue on April sixteenth, and what we are proceeding is based off the council direction that we received on April sixteenth. And as a reminder, our current lease for the golf carts at Boslonan expired in February of this year. Now, as a part of this process, we did see competitive bids for the golf course. We went through Sourcewell, which is an operative purchasing agency. The little bidder on the project was NB Golf, and they will be supplying the golf carts if council were to approve the lease this evening. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as the resolutions this evening, it is important to note that the key financial terms are listed up on the big board that we have. So of course, the lease, the cart lease would be for fifty-six new golf carts, as well as three used utility vehicles. The term of the lease would be five years, and the annual payments that we are entertaining this evening would be just over fifty-two thousand dollars per year. It is important to note that the interest rate associated with the lease is right at six point two-five percent. However, the lease payment does include the annual cart maintenance as well. Now, at the end of the five years, the city would have the option, if we desired, and it would be purely up to the city council to purchase the golf carts, the amount of that purchase price is a hundred and eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred dollars, and that's only if we chose to do so on it. Now, finally, when we consider this item, we have an expenditure, an annual expenditure of about fifty-two thousand dollars. But as far as the rental income and the way the fee structure works at the Boslonan Golf Course, is we have budgeted rental income from cart rentals of a hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars projected for two thousand and twenty-five. Now, based on this, Mr. Mayor, our whole recommendation is to proceed with the lease purchase agreement that is being proposed this evening. And with that, that concludes the staff presentation. We'd more than happy to answer any questions the council may have on this item.
All right, thank you, Mike. Can I have your motion for approval?
Over.
DeYoung, Hopkins, discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes. Close no, Mandy, please call the roll.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Dan Strickland.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Motion passed. Public hearing, moving on, public hearing, regarding not to exceed four hundred thousand dollar lease or lease purchase agreement in general fund, anything that, Mike?
No, sir.
Mandy, any written comments?
No written comments.
Council, any comments?
I just mentioned, I was out of Boston this morning, and then had a record-setting day yesterday. Hundred and seventy-seven rounds.
Okay, anything else? Any audience members have a comment on this item? All right, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So, over.
Dan Strickland, DeYoung, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes. Close no, Mandy, please call the roll.
Dan Strickland.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes. Motion passed. Okay, moving on, resolution number six-six-nine-one, entitled Resolution Instituteing Proceedings to Take Additional Action for the Authorization of Lease or Lease Purchase Agreement Payable from the General Fund in the Principal Amount Not to Exceed Four Hundred Thousand for Personal Property Used by the City. Can I have your motion for approval? Hopkins, DeYoung, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes. Close no, Mandy, please call the roll.
Hopkins. DeYoung.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Dan Strickland.
Yes.
Motion passed. Resolution number six-six-nine-six, entitled Resolution Authorizing Action for a Lease Purchase Agreement Payable from the General Fund in the Principal Amount of three hundred and seventy thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars and twenty-two cents for personal property reused by the city. Can I have your motion for approval?
So, over.
Dan Strickland, DeYoung, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes. Close no, Mandy, please call the roll.
Dan Strickland.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Motion passed. Resolution number six-six-nine-two, entitled Resolution Accepting the Boslonan Conference Center Repair Project, Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. As Mayor DeWort stated, what this resolution would do is accept Boslonan Conference Center Repair Project. It is important to note that this project did involve whole renovation of areas of facility that was damaged due to the water incident, frozen water pipe, and the conference center. Now, we started off with the original contract at just over one million and seventy thousand dollars. We had through change orders prior to that at just over seventy-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars, which left us with the final contract amount of one million, one hundred and fifty-four thousand and fifty-seven dollars. Now, it is important to note, of that amount, the city's insurance carrier has paid one million, sixty-three thousand, nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars of this, which means the city sure was just over eighty-six thousand dollars for the project. Now, as far as the city's engineer was on this, was Mayor and Associates, they believe the project has been completed in accordance with the plans and specifications for the project, and they are recommending acceptance of the project this evening as well. That is also the staff recommendation. So what we have pictured up here is a picture of the renovated conference center and the completed project that we have at Boslonan. So with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes the staff presentation. We'd more than happy to answer any questions the council may have on this item.
All right, thank you, Mike. Can I have your motion for approval? Hopkins, DeYoung, any discussion?
So is the facility available for ramping down, or is...
Jeanette, would you like to answer that question?
Sure. The, the way it's set up right now is that we're staffed to host golf events there, but not at this time. We won't be doing like any weddings or meetings, but anything golf related that can be supported by golf staff.
Okay, anything else? If you haven't been out there, it's pretty nice. All right, I'm sorry. All right, so we'll vote on the motion. So all in favor, please say yes. Close no, Mandy, please call the roll.
Hopkins.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Dan Strickland.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, resolution number six-six-nine-three, entitled Resolution Approving Order in Preparation of Plans, Specifications, Form of Contract Notice of Hearing Notice of Letting, Setting Date for Public Hearing, Authorizing the Taking of Bids, and Authorizing Bid Opening for the Union Street Reconstruction Project, Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, as Mayor DeWort stated, what this resolution really does is establishes June eighteenth as the public hearing date, and also gives staff permission to seek bids for the Union Street Reconstruction Project. Now, the section that we're talking on, Union Street, begins at East Third Street, extends past Morgan's Drive, and it's this orange highlighted area that we have listed up here on the big board. And we do have a description of the project, but it is full reconstruction, along with the associated utilities as well. So, Mandy, let's go ahead, please. Now, as far as the engineer's estimate of probable cost, it's just over five hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. If council were to approve this resolution this evening, we would actually conduct a bid lighting on June sixth of this year, and hopefully, we'd have a construction contract for council's consideration on June eighteenth. If council approved a contract on the night of the eighteenth, we would actually perceive that the project started on July first of this year. We believe the final completion is approximately sixty-five days for this project, and I believe that concludes the staff presentation. So once again, what we're really doing is establishing the public hearing date of June eighteen for the project, and authorizing staff to seek bids for the project as well, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Mike. Can I have your motion for approval?
So, over.
Dan Strickland, Hopkins, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes. Close no, Mandy, please call the roll.
Dan Strickland.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Motion passed. Resolution, moving on, resolution number six-six-nine-four, entitled Resolution Approving Form of Contract Making Award of Contract for the City Hall Roof Replacement Project, Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, as background on this project, the two thousand and twenty-four budget, which is the current fiscal year that we have, is we have nearly seventy thousand dollars budgeted for the City Hall Roof Repair Project. We did solicit quotes for the project, and we received two quotes on the hearing, which is listed up here on the big board. The lowest responsible bidder was Hopkins Ripping in about forty-eight thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars, and staff is recommending proceeding with lowest quote from Hopkins Ripping. City, it is important to note that the city attorney has reviewed the bids, and as, as well as approved, reviewed and approved this proposed contract that we're considering this evening. So, Mandy, I'm not sure if there's any additional information on this.
Hopkins.
So that concludes it. What we're proposing is toward the contract to Hopkins Ripping, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Mike. Can I have any motion for approval?
So, over.
DeYoung, Dan Strickland, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes. Close no, Mandy, please call the roll.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Dan Strickland.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carlson. Hopkins.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, resolution number six-six-nine-five, entitled Resolution Approving Park Ship Agreement Between the City of Pella and Wonderspilling for the Purpose of Constructing Phase Three Improvements at Wonderspilling. What did you make? Say it twice, playground at Kewal's Park. Not sure I'm saying it right. Fred, am I saying it right? How am I supposed, what is it?
Wonderspilling.
Wonderspilling?
Wonderspilling.
What he said. Hey, Mike.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna take a pass on this one, too. I'm gonna refer to it as the Miracle Park, and by the way, it's a fantastic park right now. What we have here is the phase three improvements for the project, and we have listed up on the big board what the phase three projects are with this. It is important to note, that the Wonderspilling or the Miracle Park is a local nonprofit agency created by the Pella Quonis Club as well, and we do have a mission of the Quonis Club up there as well. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as the agreement that we're considering this evening, it is important to note that the improvements constructed will be owned and maintained by the City of Pella. However, both parties would reserve the right to review the plans and specifications for the project. Now, as far as the financial allocation of the costs, as we estimate, the project would have right around a three-hundred thousand dollar estimated cost. The city's contribution this evening would be capped at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on this. Now, if approved this evening, the city would be responsible for hiring an engineer. The contract, we anticipate presenting a contract to the city council in June of this year for an engineering contract, and we plan to hold a bid lending, or tentatively plan to hold a bid lending in July of this year. And hopefully, if everything goes well, we'd be able to construct these improvements by this fall on it. So, once again, as far as the agreement, the contract, contractual documents this evening that have been reviewed by the city attorney and city staff is recommending approval of the resolution.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Can I have your motion for approval?
Over.
DeYoung, Hopkins, discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes. Close no, Mandy, please call the roll.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Dan Strickland.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, ordinance number ten-thirty-eight, titled An Ordinance Amending the Zoning Ordinance of the City of Pella Iowa by amending the boundaries of the institutional district to include property located at three oh three Liberty Street and directing the zoning administrator to note the ordinance number and the date of this change and the official zoning map. This is the second reading, Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, as far as tonight's agenda, we have two rezoning requests presented by Pellic Christian Grade School, for both for three oh three Liberty Street and three oh four Liberty Street. We have a combined presentation for both of these requests this evening. Now, as far as the zoning jurisdiction on three oh three Liberty Street, what's being proposed is to go from R one C to institutional, three oh four Liberty Street would be from R two to institutional as well. We'll explain those zoning classifications here as we go through the presentation. But as far as properties to orientate everyone, they're the yellow highlighted boxes that we have up here. Pellic Christian Grade School is located right over here. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, anytime we consider a rezoning request, it's always important that the city reviews its comprehensive plan. One of the key items of the comprehensive plan is the future use land map. And what you'll see with the future use land map, it largely targets the zoning classification by how the properties were used when it was developed in two thousand and fourteen. And so, once again, we have Pellic Christian Grade School located right over here, and these are the highlighted properties. Now, from a land use compatibility matrix, when we look at Pellic Christian Grade School, that's another key indicator of the comprehensive plan. The land use compatibility matrix on a scale of one to five, of one being incompatible uses to five being completely compatible. Schools are generally very compatible with residential districts on this, and so for a land use compatibility matrix, we have a four that we have with this as well. Now, looking at the request tonight from the school district on this, we do believe it complies and is in accordance with the city's comprehensive plan as well. Mainly, when you look at this, it is in very close proximity to the subject properties that we have, and it's also compatible with the land use surrounding the properties on that. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, we do have representatives from Pellic Christian in attendance this evening, and they probably would be able to explain the proposed site plan that you see up on the big board. So, Mayor, if we could circle back to this, because at the last meeting when we discussed this, there was talk about traffic circulation, and when is the ultimate plan in the neighborhood for traffic circulation? So I'll actually refer that back to Pellic Christian at the end of our presentation. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as the staff findings on this, is we believe the rezonings aligns with the aspects of the comprehensive plan. Planning and zoning commission also approved these rezoning requests, and their March twenty-fifth meeting on affordable vote on both of them. Included in the packet is the additional comments that we've received on the rezoning request, including the letter from the school boards president, which is included in the packet. And finally, Mr. Mayor, it is important to note that the applicant has requested waiver at the third reading to the rezoning request for both of these properties. So with that, I'd like to refer the floor over to Pellic Christian Grade School representatives to explain the proposed site plan and answer the questions on the site, on the traffic circulation for the site, so.
Thank you, Derek Van Dyke.
Can you?
Yep.
Do the mics, whatever, if it's watching.
Derek Van Dyke, Pellic Christian Grade School. Yes, we are looking at changing our parking lot up. The, what we're trying to do is get more people into the parking lot. To do that, we are going to re, re, change our parking lot direction. Right now, we're stuck with cars backing into the, the drop-off lane, so we're going to take that away and make two drop-off lanes, and then also turn the flow of traffic around the opposite way. So that is what it currently is, and this is what it would be when we're done. So we would have two drop-off lanes. We're extending the drop-off lane back to get two lanes of traffic in and out. And then we'll also have the drop-off lane here that people could pull in and park. If there's not room for parking, they're able to come around to park this way. By doing this, we're hoping to, to take traffic off of the veins top of East Third and, and get more people into our parking lot this time. Yep, any questions?
Yeah, if there's any question or comments, Derek. Okay. Then I'll entertain a motion for approval.
So, over.
You, Hopkins, DeYoung, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes. Close no, Mandy, please call the roll.
Hopkins.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Dan Strickland.
Yes.
And Carlson then have to disconnect.
Okay. Motion passed.
Moving to satisfy your rule, placing of their reading, court.
When we call some off, we don't have enough to do that.
Okay, so we'll move on to ordinance number ten-thirty-nine. Entitled An Ordinance Amending the Zoning Ordinance of the City of Pella Iowa by amending the boundaries of the institutional district to include property located at three oh four Liberty Street and directing the zoning administrator to note the ordinance number and date of this change and official zoning map. This is the second reading. Is there a motion for approval?
So, over.
Dan Strickland, Hopkins, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes. Close no, Mandy, please call the roll.
Dan Strickland.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, ordinance number ten-forty, entitled An Ordinance Amending City Code Chapter one sixty-five. Table one sixty-five, point twelve dash two, permitted uses by zoning district to expand where microbreweries are permitted. Second reading here, Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, once again, I'd like to direct everyone's attention to the big board for a presentation on this item. As Mayor DeWort stated, this ordinance would amend the city zoning code to allow microbreweries to operate in the central business district, subject to obtaining a special use permit from the city's Board of Adjustment. When we talk about the central business district up here on the map, it would be anywhere that you would see would be in a green highlighted area here. So, microbreweries could be potentially located anywhere located in this area. Once again, it's subject to a special use permit. We'll be explaining that very shortly here. Now, it is important to note, considering microbreweries, they're currently only allowed in the community commercial district, which is commonly referred to as CC, as well as the mixed-use commercial district, which is CUC. Generally, if you were to look at the mixed-use commercial districts, these would be the corridors on Washington Street. I believe it's from West Second out to right around West Sixth would be CUC, then past Washington Street to the west would be community commercial. Similarly, when you go down to Main Street, at the intersection of Main Street and Oskaloosa and up to the downtown, that would be your CUC, the properties that abut that area, and outside of that would be CC. So that's generally the general areas where microbreweries are currently allowed to operate. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as we discussed at the last meeting, the planning and zoning commission with the proposed ordinance that we're considering this evening is recommending only allowing one special use permit in the central business district. Now, when we consider special use permits, it's very important to understand the process that would actually occur for a microbrewery to locate in the downtown. What the ordinance is saying is there would be one business license to be granted for a microbrewery in the central business district. Once that was occupied, there would be no more licenses eligible in the central business district. Now, the whole purpose of a special use permit, if you wanted to look at it, fifty thousand foot overview, it's really geared towards those uses that could be good fits for your zoning district, but it really depends on the location and what's being proposed. In this particular case, to gain a special use permit, the process would be is you'd have an applicant that would have a business plan. They'd also have to have a proposed location, and once they made their application to the city, the city would notify abutting property owners within two hundred feet of that, of the application for the special use permit. Board of Adjustment would have a public hearing, and that public hearing, if there's any concerned property owners, they would have an opportunity to come and voice their concerns to the city's Board of Adjustment before a special use permit could be granted. Now, granting a special use permit, it's also important to note that the Board of Adjustment has a wide range of options to help ensure land use compatibility. Again, that's... Again, that's what the whole process is geared towards, is making sure, or trying to ensure that we have land use compatibility between the applicant and the abiding property owners as well. For instance, on a microbrewery, they could limit the production, they could limit the hours of operation, they can limit the parking as well in parking on public streets, and where they designate where the parking would need to occur for the employees of the business. And so, there's a wide range of actions the Board of Adjustment could take in issuing a special use permit. Similarly, if there's problems with the microbrewery after operations, just the Board of Adjustment can issue a special use permit. They could also actually reject it or take it away, or actually close the special use permit for the property owner as well, or revoke it, was the word asked before, in the event of non-compliance as well. So, there's a wide range of authority that the Board of Adjustment has in these matters, but the key takeaway is, before granting a special use permit, you'll have a location. There'll be a public hearing at the Board of Adjustment, and the property owners within two hundred feet of that proposed location will be notified by mail by the City of Pella. So, let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as staff's recommendation this evening, we mirror the planning and zoning commission. Yet, actually, the planning and zoning commission unanimously approved this proposed ordinance at their March twenty-fifth meeting. Staff is also recommending approval this evening as well. So, with that, Mr. Mayor, I believe that concludes the staff presentation. Be more than happy answering questions the council may have on the site.
All right. Thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval? Hopkins, Young, any discussion?
I see the, looks like the police station is in this district. Maybe uses?
Is there any opportunity to have discussion from the floor since this is the second reading? Uh, no. Anything else, counsel, that's relevant? All right. We'll go on the motions. All in favor, please say yes. opposed, no. Mandy, please call a roll.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Young.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Dan Strickland.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, ordinance number ten-forty-one, entitled an ordinance amending water rates in the City of Pella Iowa. This is the first reading.
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item, what this proposed ordinance would do is actually increase the city's water rates by seven percent effective June first. It is important to note, the proposed ordinance is similar to the one that we discussed on April sixteenth for this. And in summary, we believe that the proposed increase is necessary to cover the cost of increased operating expenses and the capital needs of the city's water system. Now, we do have up on the big board listed what the potential impact of this rate increase would be. And we're just shy of four dollars a month for the typical residential customer that uses seven thousand gallons of water per month on that. So, with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes the staff presentation. More than happy to answer any questions the council may have on this item.
All right. Thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
Absolutely.
Torque. Hopkins, Young, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes. opposed, no. May I please call a roll?
Hopkins.
Yes.
Young.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Dan Strickland.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, Abstract of Bills number twenty-one fifty. Can I get a motion for approval?
Absolutely.
Dan Strickland, Hopkins, any discussion or questions? The eight-hundred-thousand insurance premium, so that's the whole year for everything.
Brian, I'd like to direct that question back to our finance director, Brian Mead. Brian, please answer that question.
Yes, that's the all property liability and vehicle insurance for the year for all departments.
Name of the number?
Yes.
Okay, anything else, counsel? All right. All in favor, please say yes. opposed, no. May I please call a roll?
Dan Strickland.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Young.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Motion passed. Any council member have any other business you would like to have addressed this evening? Any member of the public have any other business that you'd like to address council with? If you do, please step forward microphone, state your name and address. Please try to limit your comments. Three minutes.
Here are grown boom, eleven-twelve Lincoln Street. So, I started a group four months ago, maybe? So, it's a wheelchair support group is what it is. So, I have a few of the guys here, and I do have cards that we started. And we just kind of want to do better for the residents of Pella. And so, that's what we're kind of here for, and we would like to be put on the agenda. So, we'll have to go through those steps in June-ish, just to make handicap accessible parking better in this community, and how do we go about doing that? We have talked to a few of the city council members just to get their perspective, and so, we are just kind of wanting to know what we're supposed to do next, because they do have some difficulties.
Okay.
My name is Abe Grant. I live on ten-fourteen West First Street. This is just a little introduction to, we're hopefully gonna come back in mid-June and do a longer presentation, get on the agenda. So, I was paralyzed one year ago, and one of the biggest issues starting out was just trying to find parking spots uptown. There's not very many spots, and spots that are up there are normally a ways away from where I want to be, especially at the movie theater. The nearest spot that would be driver-side accessible is up on the square. And for rolling myself, it's kind of a long ways, not a huge fan of it. I don't like to roll any further than I have to. So, again, we'll come back later, bring a presentation, I'll guess latch up it together. Just wanted to give this a little seed in the back of your heads.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Full disclosure, our daughter's wheelchair bound in high routine. We get a beautiful, a failed one with the ADA. I'll be happy to hear what you come out of.
Anyone else to comment? All right, then we will adjourn to a policy and planning to discuss proposed employee benefit enhancements for medical and term life insurance. Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, actually, I'm gonna turn the floor over to our city clerk, Human Resources Director Manny Smith, to walk council through this item. So, Mandy?
So, our plan here was with the fiscal year, so we have been doing a lot of review of benefits. And we talked about dental envisions so far, so tonight's going to be about medical and term life insurance. So, it's been a substantial amount of time since we've done the benefit review, so we could do a whole list of review of everything. The first item to discuss, just to kind of share the history for medical, we participate in a partial self-funded medical plan. So, we have a very high deductible plan with Walmart. And then, the city is self-funded to buy that down to a lower deductible and out-of-pocket max. So, there's kind of two pieces to it, and it has been very good and effective in managing cost increases. So, as a result, and it's kind of uncommon, we are recommending no increase to the premium this year, because we've done such a good job with the financial piece of it. So, premiums are up on the screen. Currently, we pay ninety percent as a city, so you see the total premiums up there. Employees pay ten percent of that. So, we are recommending no changes, basically. So, the deductibles, out-of-pocket maximums, premiums, all would stay the same. Any questions on that before we go on to the next? So, as part of our review, one of the biggest things that have come up is the way our plan works is we have to meet our deductible before anything kicks into cover. So, if you need to go in for a regular doctor's visit because you're ill, you are going to pay that full cost until your deductible is met. Same thing with prescriptions. If you have an expensive prescription, you are gonna pay that full cost of it. So, we have some employees that are insulin dependent, for example. They go in and it's several hundred dollars at the pharmacy for their first fill of the year. So, huge feedback on this. So, we looked into, can we offer a second medical plan? And what we have found is this one will implement co-pays for office visits of twenty-five dollars for in-network providers, and also co-pays for prescriptions. So, the most you would pay for a prescription fill would be eighty-five dollars, and that would be a special drug. So, as I mentioned, all items currently are subject to the deductible before it kicks in. We have a lot of people with young families who bring their kids to the doctor for ear infections only, and they're getting hit with a pretty high bill to meet that deductible first. So, proposal is to keep the one we currently have, but then also offer this second choice. The co-pay plan rates are higher, and those are up here. And what we are recommending is, as you'll recall, we currently pay ninety percent on the co-insurance plan. We wanted to keep the city's contribution pretty close to the same, no matter which plan you pick. So, that would mean that we would reduce to eighty-five percent. So, employees would pay fifteen percent of that, and the premiums are up here. It basically adds up to, when you are in a single plan, you'll pay about fifty dollars more a month for a premium. Families would pay about a hundred dollars more a month. And then, employees would have the ability to choose which one works for them.
Is this through the same provider?
Same provider. So, it would be pretty much the same arrangement, where Walmart is a high deductible plan, and then that involves the co-pays. And our second provider, SIS, though, would only kick in if you have a hospitalization, emergency room visit, surgery, any fifth item. And that usually is the problem with the billing, is when you get to that second provider, it's hard to reconcile the paperwork. So, for an employee who only goes to the doctor and gets prescriptions, this is going to be a huge enhancement to them.
And the city's per day is pretty similar?
Yes. So, the total dollar amount of what we put towards that total plan is the same. So, while employees will pay a little bit more for this one, overall, the city, no matter which plan you pick, would contribute about the same. Any questions on that? The other item that came up as an overarching need with our employees is term life insurance. Currently, the city provides thirty thousand dollars in term life insurance to the employees at no cost. As we know, that in a case of a death, that doesn't cover all that much. So, we looked into an option to purchase additional term life insurance, and we got a great quote from a principal working for Two Gold City locally here. The benefit to this plan is enrolling as a group allows all of our employees to not have to go through medical underwriting to enroll. So, any employee could enroll up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars without answering medical questions. So, if you have an employee with a health condition, normally, they can't get insurance on the credit market. They would be able to join our plan with no impacted premiums. The premiums that we received, the only difference is the age bracket, and then, if you're a smoker, not a smoker. A very great plan. This plan is fully employee-paid, similar to dental envision. So, highly recommending this as an option to employees, too.
What do you please determine?
So, it gets more expensive the older you get. So, what we typically see is as you get older, people will drop off of the plan because it just gets too expensive. For someone who has a younger family, maybe under fifty, it's going to decrease the rate price.
Is it, would it be a whole separate policy from the thirty thousand?
It is. Yep. Medlife is to be used for the thirty thousand dollar policy, and they just were not competitive on rates. So, that's why they went to price lower.
So, that also won't affect the base of the city's plans?
Correct. That will stay the same.
And is it annual renewable or?
Yeah, we have the rates locked in for two years, and then, we will go through an annual rate review after that.
Um, if we, the private policies?
For the term life insurance, yes. Yep. So, there's a rate chart that takes the factors of age and smoking into account. Those are what can change in your annual renewal. But they locked us in for two years with a new group.
And then, the rate would increase every year with the age?
Uh, yes. So, yep, if you join as a twenty-year-old and you go off a bracket, your cost increases, yes. More questions?
Sounds like the idea for employees, what?
So, if you are in agreement, the plan is that we will bring these back to formal consideration on May twenty-one, and then, May twenty-two, we're gonna kick off an open enrollment and have employee meetings, have providers in to answer questions, and guide employees one-on-one, and then, it will be in July first, starting. So, we'll be hitting the ground running and we'll do some benefit changes. Any concerns?
Nope.
That was good.
All right. Thanks, counsel.
Thanks.
Good. Thanks, Mandy.
Thanks.
All right. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Torque.
Hopkins and Strickland, all in favor, please say yes. opposed, no. Mandy, please call a roll.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Dan Strickland.
Yes.
Young.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carl.
Yep.
Motion passed. We are.